Okay, so we're going to call the meeting to order. Welcome, everyone. And we'll start by asking for any items. If there's any items to be added to the agenda, we'll be looking for consensus on those. Any items, councilors? Okay, so hearing none, I'll look for a motion to approve the agenda, please. I'm seeing a start vote number here. We're just having a great time. You guys, I think they need that through the... But we'll just continue, so.
Also, to accept the agenda as presented.
You have something to add?
Yeah, I had my... It's not working right.
No, it's... No, I couldn't see it. Sorry, sorry, Councilor Sampson.
So I just have two... Two items, please. Yeah, so two items.
Okay.
One is the recognition of a local owner-operator.
Okay.
And the other one is the cell internet tower issue in West Arishat.
Cell tower in West Arishat?
Yes, please.
So, Councilor Sampson is proposing two items added to the agenda. Recognition of owner-operator in the region and cell tower in West Arishat. Is there general consensus to the agenda? Great, okay, thank you. So.
Thank you.
Any other items? Okay, so could I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So now all make motions to approve the agenda.
All right, thank you, Deputy Warden. Could I have a second round, Councilor?
Oh, we're in on motion.
Brett Sampson, thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carried. Thank you. Okay, I think we might have lift-off here with our sound system, so we'll try again. Okay. So next is review of the minutes. They have been circulated in advance, and I'm assuming everyone had a chance to review them. Are there any errors or omissions to report on the minutes? Okay, so hearing none. Yeah, sorry, go ahead, Councilor Sampson. Oh, okay, all right. So could I have a motion to approve the minutes, please, as presented? Councilor Melanie Sampson.
I approve the adoption of the minutes of March 8th to any 21.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Sean Sampson.
Hey, yeah, I'll second that motion.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, motion carried. Thank you. Okay, so now, before we get to our presentations, I also want to talk about cupcakes. So this is... It's Autism Awareness Month, and we have all worn blue, in so much as we could find blue in our closets, which for me was a great challenge, and want to recognize, you know, some of the efforts that are going on in the county at a later point in the agenda. But before we go anywhere into the agenda, I want to offer everyone who's here this evening a cupcake. And I'm so sorry for the people online that I can't offer you a cupcake, but you can get them at The Farmer's Pantry in St. Peters. They're on sale there, and all of the proceeds from the cupcakes go back to the Autism Society, so. So I don't know, Councilor Melanie Sampson, if you wouldn't mind uncovering those if, you know, if somebody would like to have one. I feel like if they're uncovered, somebody might take one. And we could... Maybe we could put them on the media table behind there, if that's okay. These are beautiful cupcakes, and, like I said, made by The Farmer's Pantry, and they have the little... The logo of the Autism Society on them, so they are works of art, so. Okay? So with that important piece of business done, I'm going to hand the floor over to our guests. We have Stan Johnson, who is a SEPI coordinator, and Ron Newcomb here for Bidu Ba. You're going to provide us with a presentation this evening. As I mentioned, we're on a bit of a timeline, so 15, 20 minutes, and yeah, all right. So what I'll get you to do is I'll get you to push the bread button on your phone there. There you go.
All right.
You're on, thank you.
Okay, well, first of all, I wanted to say thank you, Warden Mumberkett, for having us here this evening. Richmond County is a founding member of the Bredor Lakes Collaborative Environmental Planning Initiative, so we're very appreciative of that support. But we do recognize that with progress, there are new phases at the table, so we're happy to have this opportunity to be able to kind of reintroduce ourselves. As you mentioned, I'm Ron Newcomb. SEPI grew out of a desire for a management plan for the Bredor Lakes, so there's kind of a long history, many steps along the way to get there. I assume my presentation is up there, so you can see here a picture of the oyster operation in Escazoni back in the early '70s. It was events like the sudden decline of the oyster industry in the Bredor Lakes that spurred on this need, that people could see there was a need for a management plan. And then other steps along the way were the formation of the Escazoni Fish and Wildlife Commission in the early '90s. In 1999, UINR, the Unamaghi Institute of Natural Resources, was established, another important step for the Bredor Lakes. In the '90s also, there was a series of conferences and workshops that started to happen where people got together to talk about the needs of the Bredor and protecting this ecosystem. But it was in 2003, kind of a milestone, was the first time that the First Nations chiefs sat down with the senior government officials to actually talk about what could be done to protect the Bredor Lakes. And there's actually a photograph here of that event, as it took place in Wogmukook. And also, in 2004, workshops started to be conducted with non-government stakeholders in the Bredor Lakes too, to discuss the same issues. And then in 2005, the SEPI was actually... Came together, was born. Now, SEPI is a table where all levels of government, the First Nations chiefs, mayors and wardens municipally, the provincial ministers, and federal regional directors general, all sit together at the same table to discuss the common goal of protecting the Bredor Lakes and seeing them healthy and successful. So it stands out as unique, certainly in Nova Scotia, certainly in the country, and many will say in the world, as a place where all levels of government sit together and talk about and collaborate together for a common goal. So that's quite an amazing thing. Now, on this slide, you can see a copy of the Bredor Lakes Charter that was signed at that time. So all these levels of government all signed their name and supported this initiative. At that time, it was Warden John Boudreau who represented Richmond County and committed Richmond to this initiative. As far as the organization of the SEPI, as I mentioned, it's made up of the First Nations chiefs, the mayors and wardens of the municipalities of Cape Breton, provincially, the ministers of the departments that exist here in Nova Scotia, and then federally, the regional directors general of the Maritimes Region for all the departments, all make up the SEPI. They are what we call the senior council. But they meet twice a year to oversee the operation of SEPI and to find out the issues that need to be collaborated on. But the actual, like, nuts and bolts running, the day-to-day running of the SEPI, they've appointed a management committee to look after that, and that committee is representatives of each of these departments, sit on that committee as appointed by the senior council, and it's chaired by Senator Dan Christmas and Councilor Paul McNeil from Victoria County. But that management committee is advised by a steering committee, and at the steering committee table, every interested stakeholder has an opportunity to come together and raise issues of concern that need to be discussed, and then everybody can discuss these issues, and the management committee then is able to take these back to the senior council. The management committee is also advised by an elder council led by Dr. Albert Marshall and a youth council, which is led by Tracy Marshall from Escazoni. And the actual day-to-day running of the SEPI is looked after by Stan Johnson here. He's the coordinator for SEPI, and I assist Stan. Now, the... This is just shows some of the past projects, just a small sampling of some of the things that SEPI has been involved with, with the partners. And SEPI is coordinated on behalf of the partners to accomplish work around the Bredor Lakes. And this was an interesting milestone as well. In 2011, the task team that supported or looked at the management plan for the Bredor Lakes finally released this document, "The Spirit of the Lakes Speaks," written from the perspective of the lakes. Now, this as well stands out as something unique in the country and perhaps even the world, because most people would expect to see a management plan that's a set of rules and regulations about how things will take place. But "The Spirit of the Lakes Speaks" document recognizes that the Bredor Lakes is an ever-changing ecosystem, and no one set of rules would cover every situation that will arise. It also recognizes that there's really no one body that has complete responsibility and authority to govern the Bredor Lakes. So it instead describes a management process plan where everyone comes together to collaborate together, using seven guiding principles, and also the concept of two-eyed seeing, which if you're not familiar with, just basically at a very base level means having an eye on traditional Mi'kmaq knowledge and also Western science, and using both of those to reach a successful conclusion or outcome on any issues that are discussed. Also, in 2011, I'm sure you're aware that the Bredor Lakes Biosphere Reserve Association was founded, and that's certainly been a major thing for the Bredor Lakes. In 2016, the People of the Lakes Speaks Conference was organized by SEPI to look at the idea of sustainable development on the Bredor Lakes, and out of that conference, six areas of industry were highlighted as worthy of focus to consider and think about how these things could be pursued in a sustainable way. After the conference, certain task teams were formed, initiatives were undertaken to consider the things that were brought up at the conference, but probably one of the most notable ones is the conference gave a voice to young people in the area. So the youth were able to speak out at that conference and give their opinion and their input into what takes place around the lakes, so much so that our youth council is now developed into what we call SEPI youth. And it's kind of taken on a life of its own. In fact, they voiced their idea that they wanted to have their own Sustainable Development Conference, which was held in 2018 in Port Hoxbury. And since then, they've engaged in many other initiatives. It continues to grow and has become a robust source of advice for the management committee and thus the senior council. In 2019, SEPI partnered with the Biosphere to co-host the... This climate change adaptation forum, from which came a report, which gave recommendations for climate change adaptation for biospheres, not only here but across Canada. And this is an interesting point, because we've actually garnered a lot of attention both nationally and even internationally because of SEPI being such a unique organization. Many people come to us and say, "How is it that you're able to get all levels of government to sit at the same table and calmly discuss issues to reach common goals?" And so they've studied SEPI and how it operates and its organization, and we're happy to do what we can to spread the message. And this slide just shows some of the current projects that SEPI has undertaken. One I'd like to highlight is we are aware that municipalities are under a mandate now to develop a set of minimum development standards for your area. A few years ago, SEPI had developed a report on development standards, recommendations from municipalities, and we're currently in the process of revisiting those, to revise them and bring them up to date, and also incorporate new things we've learned since then. The first project mentioned there is a species at risk research project that we're conducting, so, for instance, we would like to incorporate information about species at risk into those development standards, so that we hope that the municipalities would... Could use this document to help you in your work there, and that you would also consider having information about species at risk in your development plans. Now, I would like to show you just a little bit about our work plan for this fiscal year coming up. This page shows the budget of the contributions that all of the SEPI members put into the pot to operate SEPI. Usually, the First Nations communities and the municipalities around the Bredor contribute $5,000 each per year to the running of SEPI. And our work plan is divided into four sections. Each section talks about a priority in our terms of reference. So our core operating activities and the budget that goes with that, we have social and cultural priorities in our work plan and the budget that goes with that, environmental objectives in our work plan and the budget that goes with that, and lastly, economic priorities and the activities for that and the budget that goes along with that. So you can see our total expenses are expected to be $309,000 for this fiscal year. So finally, I could just mention that SEPI would not be the success that it is without the partnerships that we have, without this spirit of collaboration and all of the SEPI members coming together to work as one. As Dr. Albert Marshall said here, "If we all work together, there's absolutely nothing we cannot do." We've certainly seen that to be true over the last 15 years or so that SEPI has been in operation. Now, Shirley McNamara had planned to be here to talk about Bidu Ba. If you like, I could just cover that presentation for you, and then if you had any questions.
Okay, that sounds good.
Now, is that on the... Yeah, right here. And just to go through this briefly, Bidu Ba is an organization that in many ways is very much like the SEPI, only it operates at a municipal level. So Bidu Ba was... Refers to... The English translation would be flowing into oneness, and refers to the Bredor Lakes and how it connects all of Cape Breton, all of Unamaghi. And the shared goal is to preserve and enhance the social, economic, and environmental prospects in Unamaghi, Cape Breton, for all seven generations. This just shows the active members of the Bidu Ba Committee. Shirley McNamara is the chair of the committee. And we do need a member from Richmond County here to join that initiative and just to sit at that table. But it is an opportunity for all the municipalities around the lake to sit together and bring forward problems that you're facing, no doubt other municipalities are facing. How can we work together to see these things handled? And First Nations. So it started with, really, one of the first initiatives that it undertook was sewage in the lakes, and this was a problem at the time, but Bidu Ba took on a project together with First Nations communities and the municipalities to do some work, such as installing pumpout stations for recreational and commercial boats. And there's six around the lake now. And then upgrading outdated sewage treatment plants at Waikagoma and Moegoma. And so this kind of kicked things off with the projects that Bidu Ba does, but it... All of these are the types of things that it undertakes, so that these municipalities and First Nations councils are working together for things that will benefit everybody. And there are many other activities that it has undertaken in... Over the years, but we've recently really reinvigorated the committee, and we have almost 100% participation from all the councils around the lake, so we would love to have you there as well. And these are some of the issues that we hope to look at soon in the coming years. And Stan and I, as SEPI, we support that initiative, and also the Unamaghi Institute of Natural Resources does what it can to support that initiative as well. So Paul Schwartz is the coordinator for the Bidu Ba Committee, and he's included a slide here with his contact information if you have any questions, or so that you can also participate. By all means, contact Paul, and he would love to hear from you. And he ends with this quote from Black Elk. But if there's any questions on either SEPI or Bidu Ba, then hopefully we can answer them for you.
Absolutely. Thank you so much, gentlemen. That's really a lot of information and some really great work being done. I can't believe it's been 15 years, like... Anyway, the time flies when you're having fun. So, councilors, any questions for Ron or Stan? Deputy Warden?
Yeah, the only question I was interested in, you said there were six pumpout stations. Are there any located right here in Richmond?
I think it was in One and Gundy, I think.
One and Gundy?
Okay. Right.
There were six all around the lake, so I can... And we... Every year, what we do is we have a joint patrol with the RCP, DFO, and DNR all around the lake.
Yeah.
We usually do a one-day event during the summer, and we usually check all the boats, make sure everybody's safe, but we also give out these weatherproof tags with all the GPS locations of all the pumpout stations for all the boaters.
Oh, great.
One of the issues we had one time ago was in Escazoni. It was a Sunday, and my cousin came over to my house, and he was saying like, "This is... Kids' town knows this oil slick on the shore." So he went to go check out in Crane Cove, and sure enough, he said there was a slick on the shore, some kind of substance. He didn't know what it was, so he went to the fishery and called an 800 number. Somebody came and checked it out. And a guy, Greg Johnson, used to work in our office, he was... I worked together with him, and he was telling me he was metal detecting Sunday, like, in that weekend in Big Pond, and he saw a big American yacht like cruising into the island there.
Yeah.
Must have dumped all their sewage.
Oh, my gosh.
And that's the kind of stuff that, you know...
Yeah.
It just makes you sick, right?
Yeah, yeah.
But now, because of that initiative of Bidu Ba, there's actually regulations in place and pumpout stations to be used.
Right. Right.
There's actually too another initiative that's quite exciting, that's being planned for this summer in the Bredor Lakes. It's going to be a two-week festival called Explore the Bredor.
Oh, really?
Where all the activities, outdoor activities and concerts and everything that take place are going to come under one umbrella, and we'll be able to promote that through SEPI, through, hopefully, tourism Nova Scotia.
Wow.
And Destination Cape Breton. But anyway, one of those things will be this joint patrols, well, we hope will take place during that whole festival, so people will go around and just educate the boating public about the pumpout stations.
Yeah, because it is really a lot about education, right?
Yes.
It really, really is. I think, you know, people want to do the right thing, but they don't know what they don't know sometimes, and you don't have a sense of the dates yet for that Explore the Bredor.
Last week of July, first week of August.
Ends August 8th, I think.
Okay.
But we'll send you the... Actually, a position went out for the coordinator.
Okay.
It's also our partner with is Oceans North.
Okay.
So we sent a fuller, so they've actually funded the position now. So this first year, we're going to give it a try and see how it goes. It's going to be mostly local because of COVID, but we'll get all our ducks lined up. There's other organizations all around the lake that are lining up for this, like anybody that's having events or stuff.
So even if these events are part of other festivals?
Yeah.
Yes.
So we're approaching all the other municipalities and groups and like...
I like it.
Clubs and everybody, and everybody's like, you know, sort of like Celtic colors on the lake sort of thing, you know? Hopefully, it'll get bigger like that. We got like three golf courses on the lake, and we've got like concert venues around the lake. I mean, I'm sure we can ramp it up once everything's...
It has the potential to easily become an annual event, but...
For sure, for sure.
We'll play it cool this year, and Oceans North has committed a good sum of money to hire coordinator to make sure everything takes place as...
There's also a lot of citizen science stuff going on as well.
That will be the main focus of it, will be citizen science and environmental concerns for the lake. All the activities will have that kind of a focus.
Okay. That's really great. Okay. I love it. I love a good festival, right? It's kind of my thing. Are there any other questions, Deputy Warden?
Yeah, no, I just want to... I just want to follow up with the... Has anybody approached, like, I guess St. Peters is the inlet to the Bredor Lakes?
Yeah.
So is there any way of... Or has anybody approached the marina maybe in St. Peters to look at a...
Yeah, yeah. That could be a part of it as well, like...
No, but for a pumpout station or for a cleanout station? Is that something that...
I'll find out.
I'm just thinking, since that is the inlet and the outlet of the Bredor Lakes, it might be, you know...
We'll find out, yeah. I'll get you the exact locations of where all the pumpout stations are.
You used to be able to pick up those placards, the plastic cards with the pumpout station information at...
At the marina.
At the marina.
Yeah.
And all the other marinas around, but we haven't produced those for years, yeah.
We should get some printed up.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. Any other questions? Yeah.
Thank you very much.
All right, well, thank you so much for coming.
Thank you.
I really appreciate it. I said to you, it's so nice to see real people. It's wonderful. But please, please take a cupcake.
I spend so much time on Zoom, it's...
Right? Please do take a cupcake, though. They're delicious, I promise. All right, thanks a lot, gentlemen. Really appreciate it. So I think our next presenter is Terry Smith with Destination Cape Breton, but Terry, we're going to ask you to just hold off one second, and Yvonne is just going to do a quick little sanitization there, so. Bye, guys. All right. Yeah. I can't believe it's been 15 years or more since SEPI started. Like, it feels like just yesterday. On that note... Welcome, Terry Smith, Chief Executive Officer with Destination Cape Breton. I think you have some information you want to share with us regarding the strategy you've developed, so. I'll hand it over to you. You just need to press the little button on your mic. You'll be all set. Is there an F5 on that keyboard? That should do it. There you go.
That's on now? There we go. Well, thank you all for having me back to present to you again, and can I just say thank you to Yvonne? She always takes care of me when I'm presenting here, and so I greatly appreciate that, sanitizing everything too. So thanks, Yvonne. It's great, the last time I spoke to you, it was talking about our annual strategy, but actually, since the spring of 2019, we've been working on a longer-term strategy. We had initially hoped to release it about this time last year, but then COVID hit and kind of threw a wrench into everything. I also want to recognize that one of our board members and our Richmond County representative on our board, Lisa Boudreau, is joining us here, so I want to thank Lisa. She is a great resource for me and keeps me on my toes, too. So I wanted to give you just a little bit of an overview of our long-term strategy. It hasn't been released yet. It will be in a couple of weeks, and we'll make sure that you get a copy of that when it's all ready, and there will be a live stream launch that we'll make you aware of as well. This slide here just shows you a couple of charts. So in the past decade, we saw tremendous growth in tourism on the island, and these four charts just show you a sense of that. Room nights sold, for example, in 2019, there was 110,000 more than in 2009, which is a significant increase. Visitation to the National Park went up significantly. Cruise ship passengers, more than 100,000, and it would have been more in 2020 if it hadn't been COVID. The economic impact of Celtic colors more than tripled. So we saw substantial growth. And why a 10-year strategy now? Well, we didn't want to rest on our laurels and just be happy with where we were. We wanted to see how we can take the industry to the next level, and that's why we initially embarked on a new 10-year strategy. Some people have asked, "Why a 10-year?", because so much can change over three to five years, for example, and... But having a 10-year strategy and a vision allows us to be bold, to really have an ambitious plan, and that gives us something to shoot for. A strategy is something that it should be a living document that you're always going back to and changing and adapting as needed, so we see that process, you know? We'll be able to adapt as we go forward, and things might pop up. Hopefully, no more pandemics are going to pop up, though. So I'm just going to go through and give you an overview of some of the themes, and the warden would have heard some of this already at a State of the Straight event a couple of weeks ago. One of the things that we're going to focus on is care for community. So you've probably heard that in some other tourism destinations that overtourism has been a problem. We haven't seen that so much here, except for like maybe small instances. If you've been on the Skyline Trail... If you've been on the Skyline Trail, late afternoon when the sun's coming down, you know, in, in August or September, you might have seen a full parking lot there or a lot of people there, those sorts of things, but usually it's not a problem. But we want to be proactive and make sure it's not a problem. So we, we want to develop this strategy so that we're planning in a responsible way so that tourism enhances our quality of life for our residents and never becomes something that has a negative impact. So that's going to be a key to the strategy. Three hundred and sixty-five day season. Currently, about two thirds of our business, tourism business, happens within a fifteen week period from the beginning of July to the, the end of Celtic colors. And, you know, there's a full thirty-seven weeks other than that, that where we could be generating visitation and providing a more sustainable industry for our operators and for those who work in the industry. So, so working on extending our shoulder seasons, building winter, those sorts of things are, are going to be a key for us. This mask keeps sliding down. Try that. Becoming sustainable, so it, it's great to follow on and see what, what SEPI has been, has been doing and we certainly support a lot of their work and actually one, one of my team is, is on, on that, that board as well. So sustainability, but when we talk about sustainability, it's not just environmental sustainability, that's a big part of it, but also cultural, social and economic sustainability, all of those are important. So as an example, it's very important that we are renewing our, our culture with our youth, for example. So, so if the Gala College didn't exist and wasn't, you know, training or, or educating some of our young, young folks in things like how to play fiddle tunes or how to step dance, would that mean that Celtic colors wouldn't exist in a generation? So it's important that things like that be, be part of the equation. So often we focus on just promoting the actual festival, but there's a whole bunch of things that you have to ensure are in place to, that lead up to that. Cluster focused. It's funny, I, I worked for an economic development organization in the, back in the early nineties, that's, that's how old I am. And one of the, one of the buzzwords at that time was, was cluster development and it's come full, full circle, but the reason it's come full circle is because it makes sense. So a cluster is essentially a group of like-minded companies, organizations within a particular sector that are in, in a geographic area. Our tourism industry actually meets all the criteria of what, what makes up an economic cluster. But within that, there, we also see that there are certain product clusters. For example, our cultural tourism folks would be a product cluster, that's very strong. Our outdoor adventure folks, our, our culinary folks. So we see three different product clusters and what this is going to focus on is supporting those clusters and the overall industry by encouraging innovation and a constant focus on trying to renew our product and, and take it to another level and with ongoing research that supports where things could go, looking at trends, seeing how can they be applied in Cape Breton. So that will be a big focus. And digitally driven, as you know, everything today is being driven by technology more and more. Within the next couple of years, I think it's ninety-seven percent of our island is going to be, going to have high-speed internet. I'm, I'm living in an area where my internet at home is absolutely terrible, so I can't wait for some of that high speed to get to me. But, but with that, we'll see that there will be more opportunities for us to develop new solutions that, that can help our industry. So for example, addressing things like overtourism, I mentioned the Skyline Trail, that we might have an app developed that could point people to say, listen, the Skyline Trail is packed today, but why don't, why don't you take a look at something that's in Richmond County where there aren't as many people, where you could have a more enjoyable experience? So we might be able to disperse people around the island in ways that, that would avoid overtourism and, and get them to see more of the beautiful place we have to offer. So that's just one, one example, but the digital focus will be big. Once you get the strategy, you will see that within it, we have identified six, what we call game changers, and these are areas where we, we feel there is room to grow the tourism industry. So those three product clusters I mentioned, cultural tourism, adventure tourism, culinary tourism, but also events and events could be meetings, it could be festivals and we'll be looking at the creation of new events and working with partners to do that. We'll be looking at supporting existing events and innovating that maybe they could expand what they're doing or enhance what they're, they're doing to become a bigger and better event. Or attracting things like sporting events, we had the Scotty's Tournament of Hearts a couple of years ago, so we'll continue to try to attract things like that. Marine tourism is another area that is going to be, I think, a key to your, your county, but in looking at the Bredor and all, but also coastal Cape Breton and the water-based activities that, that we have to offer, whether it's boating, kayaking and so forth, there's much to be developed there. And then I, I already mentioned cluster development. So six game changers and then there's six supporting themes and these aren't necessarily areas where we see growth, but there are things that can be done to support the growth. So experience development and continued focus on product innovation, sustainable tourism, I spoke to. Strengthening our tourism business climate and there's a number of things that we look at in that area. Things like place making, for example, could, could strengthen our, our business climate. Achieving excellence in visitor experience delivery, you know, things like sense of arrival when you come to the island. I know, I believe Mayor Mumberkett, you're on a call about talking about the gateway in a couple of days. Things like that improve the visitor experience, they, they will arrive in the island, they'll get a proper orientation, they'll actually see that, you know, this is an amazing place from the time you cross the causeway. And attracting, retaining and training a skilled workforce is going to be key to us as we go forward. And then the final one is our organization and, and evolving our organization to, to really support the, the leadership of this, of this plan. This plan isn't something that we're doing all by ourselves, we're, we'll, we'll be collaborating with many, many partners and, and a number of different organizations have all played a role in, in developing the plan. So within this, you know, there, there are many areas that, that we see that Richmond County could, could play a role or, or benefit from this and perhaps once the plan comes out, we can have another conversation at some point and, and look at some specific initiatives. And, you know, we've had a couple of discussions about trails, for example. There's an action here that talks about developing a comprehensive trail strategy for the island. I know the, the municipality is looking at a trail strategy that could be aligned with what's happening around the rest of the island and, and that would just make it all more, more powerful, I think, and more, more comprehensive. So that's an overview of the plan. I do have a request. So just so you know, going back a couple of years ago, Richmond County did provide an annual amount to, to Destination Cape Breton. It was actually ten thousand dollars a year that was spent on primarily product innovation activities. But, but ten thousand was the same amount that, you know, some other municipalities were paying as well. I think five thousand is, is more, is more equitable in terms of the size of the industry here in your county and, and that would be fine, fine for us. The focus of this would be really looking at new things that we could do in terms of experience development, for example, season extension initiatives. Just a couple of weeks ago, we had an experience development workshop specifically for Richmond County operators. We had six participate in that and, and we're doing some follow-up mentoring now with, with some of those folks. And we're, we're looking at another initiative, a fairly brand new one that Lisa just found out about today, but, but that will deal with Acadian cuisine that, that we're looking at. So, so there are a number of things that we're doing that could have a direct benefit on operators and organizations within your county. So, so that's my, my request to you and within that we would provide an annual report at the end of the year to indicate exactly what we did with, with that investment. So I would greatly appreciate your consideration of, of that request and anything you'd need to support that, I'd be happy to give that. And that's it, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much, Terry, that's, that's really great, thank you for the update. Some of it did look a little familiar to me. The more I hear it, the more I might, there's a chance I might remember it, so. Are there any questions from councillors? Yes, councillor Sampson?
Yeah, for me, Terry, I, I think you answered some of it, you and Lisa, about the Acadian, Acadian kind of menu cuisine, more or less, and I guess that would go into the culture, the adventure, the culinary tourism industry. So that would be, when, when you talk cluster development, you would talk like intertwining all this stuff together. Like, you know, when it comes to tourism and, and the culinary, so Acadian meat pies in this area, fish cakes and beans, all this stuff here, right? Is that what we talk about when it comes to intertwining all these together?
Yeah, and, and for many visitors, e- either, either they, they don't have the opportunity to experience traditional Acadian cuisine or they don't realize that's what they're having sometimes when they're having it. So it's, it's, it's providing that education, but, but there may also be ways to, to look at innovative approaches to, to that, that as well. I, I'm not sure what that is, but I'd leave that to, to, you know, the chefs and so forth. But yeah, we, we think that, that's a great way. You, you can tell the story of your culture partly through the food and that's, that's a great way that people can get introduced to it.
It's my favorite way to tell the story of culture.
I mean, one opportunity for me and one that's always stuck out, I've been in the food sales industry for twenty-eight years, so culinary is dear to my heart, but, you know, when you look at the heritage of, of Almaty and, and the Acadian heritage, I've always thought of boat, boat tours, a culinary experience on a boat.
That would be amazing. We got to bring you to the next experience.
Sounds like a plan.
So thank you for the presentation.
Are there any other questions for Terry? So Terry, I, I had one and I guess it's, like it kind of goes back to your, one of your opening slides, you know, you talked about the three hundred and sixty-five day season and it's like the, the holy grail that we've all been chasing here on, on Cape Breton Island for a long, long time, but it wasn't lost on me that there was a large picture of a section of multi-use trail in that picture. So can you just maybe like tell me a little bit about what you, you know, you know, from your expert opinion, like what's, what does that look like? What could that look like for Cape Breton to turn our tourism economy more towards that three hundred and sixty-five day season in terms of trails development?
In terms of trails development?
Yeah.
Well, I think if you look at what, what's happening with some trails in, in other areas, that was a photo of, of a fat bike that was on the Celtic Shores Coastal Trail. That is taking a trail that, you know, is multi-use, it, it could be, it could be that bikes are on it, it could be that other vehicles are on it, motorized vehicles or just people walking. And, and it's being used four seasons of the year. So something like that i- is, i- is a possibility. If it's, if the investment is made so that the trail is built really well and maintained very well, it can be used year-round. I think it's important to have that, to have the planning upfront and the investment there so that, you know, it, it can be multi-use. That, that trail, you know, in winter, that was a, a fat bike photo, but there could be a snowmobile photo that, that would have passed by, you know, five minutes before that, for example. And, and I, I think it's important to recognize that when trails are developed, they can be really multi, multi-use as long as they're done, done properly and, and planned out and maybe some regulations are, are needed to ensure that everybody is taking care of them the way they need to be taken care of. But, but, you know, we see, we're seeing a tremendous growth in snow shoeing, for example, on some of our trails. A lot of that would be, you know, in the Highlands where, you know, you're going to have consistent snow. And, but the same people that go hiking there in the summer or the fall are coming back now to, to try, try it in winter. And, and so that, that's, I, I think trails can be key to achieving that three hundred and sixty-five day season vision.
Okay. And I know, like I know we're getting a little late, but I did have one other question about the product innovation activities, the request for five thousand. So you said it used to be ten, it's been a number of years, I think, since.
Yeah, it was at one point with the previous council.
Yeah.
Where, where it was discontinued.
Okay, and so what, like what's, what was the impact when that fell away? I'm just, I'm wondering what, you know, you couldn't, because you mentioned a few things about, you know, what the five thousand dollars would go towards, so what, you know, what's the gap we're trying to fill, I guess is what I'm trying to figure out.
So I, I can tell you that there hasn't been a gap.
Okay.
But there hasn't been a gap because we, we just said, we're not going to ignore, you know, the operators in, in this municipality.
Okay.
So, so, but it, it would just allow us to strengthen what we are already doing.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's great, thank you, I appreciate that. Okay. Any other questions for Terry? All right, so hearing none then, Terry, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Really appreciate you coming and being with us this evening and please take a cupcake. I'm going to be, I'm going to be dreaming about saying please take a cupcake by the time we're finished here this evening.
Thank you very much.
All right. Okay, so I'm going to move us along on our agenda. The next item is notice to be given to adopt the Richmond County Asset Management Policy in order to formalize the municipality's commitment to the long-term sustainability of our infrastructure. This policy provides guidance to council and staff on identifying priorities, managing risk and meeting its service delivery goals. So we do need a motion from council to provide this notice at this time. Could I get a motion to that effect? Councillor Sampson?
I'll make a motion to adopt that.
Okay. Can I have a second or councillor Sean Sampson?
Yeah, I was looking at that motion.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on that? Okay, so all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion carried, thank you so much. Okay, so the next items on our agenda, the first one is related to the Municipal Councillor's Code of Conduct regarding requirements outlined by the province. So councillors, this ended up on our agenda this evening because late in March, we received, there was a news release that had gone out from the province regarding legislative changes that were going to be made to the Municipal Government Act to provide more transparency and increased accountability for local government. So basically, you know, from what I, you know, from what I understand is that the changes will give a little bit more teeth to the codes of conduct that, that are required under the MGA. So it, this came, came about because it was identified as a key recommendation of the Joint Municipal Provincial Accountability and Transparency Committee and also that committee was established in December twenty sixteen to address issues related to management of municipal staff and elected officials' expenses. So, so it's rooted in some, in some, some of the circumstances from a number of years back. So the proposed legislative amendments will require municipalities and village commissions to include requirements outlined by the. to include requirements outlined by the province in their code of conduct and appoint an independent body to receive and investigate alleged breaches. The amendments will also enable councils or commissions to sanction members found to have breached the code of conduct, allow in-camera discussions about the breaches, and give additional regulation authority to the Minister of Municipal Affairs. So at this point, you know, we have a code of conduct in place. Richmond County is, does have one in place now. The, I guess, legislative changes passed third reading on April 8th. So at this point, I'm, you know, I think probably our responsibility would be to propose that the CAO work to ensure that our current code of conduct aligns with the new legislation and maybe potentially to get some advice from a solicitor. But I just wanted to kind of check in with you councillors to see if you agree with that approach. Any comments, questions? So would be, okay, sorry, go ahead.
I just wanted to say this, I would agree. That's what we should do, for sure. Let's get ahead of it. Like you said, we do have a code of conduct and it probably meets the requirements, but let's have a look at it before we get to...
So we're okay maybe referring this to staff then? Okay, that's great. Okay. So maybe we'll get a motion to that effect to refer the, refer this activity to staff? If that's okay. Councillor Melanie Sampson?
I do make that motion to refer it to staff.
Okay. Could I have a second around that? Okay, councillor Sean Sampson?
Yeah, I'll take that motion.
Thank you very much. Is there any further discussion? Okay, so all those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed? Motion carried. All right. Thank you, everyone. So the next item on our agenda is the Accessibility Committee regarding councillor appointment. So of course, you'll recall that last month, we were able to confirm four members to our brand-new Accessibility Committee from the public. So we have our members-at-large identified and in place. And at this point now, as per the requirements of the provincial government under the Accessibility Act, we do need to assign a councillor or two to this committee as well. And in addition, I can tell you that we do have staff resources that are being assigned to that as well via the, I believe you said it was Laurier, right? Laurier as our recreation manager. So is there any councillors who have questions about that requirement or would be interested in participating on that committee? Okay. Quiet, quiet room. Quiet room this evening. All right. Well, if it's okay with councillors, oh, sorry, did you have, no. If it's okay with councillors, I'll agree to participate on that committee at the outset, particularly since it's just starting up. I think, I think it's important that we have representation there, so. Deputy Warden digged?
Yeah, no, I was just going to ask, or I guess find out the same. Do we know when they meet or how often they meet or what the criteria is?
It's brand-new at this point, so it'll be up to the committee to decide. There's not even a terms of reference in place. That'll be one of the things that they need to address early on.
Okay, so as well, I have no problem to, I guess, assist or sit on the committee. I would just like, it'll depend on the, you know, the meaning, schedule and requirements.
Okay.
So I guess for the upswing at the beginning, maybe?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, two heads are better than one, 100%.
If you're busy and I'm not, then...
Yeah. So I think we have a suggestion that both deputy warden and myself would be, participate on that committee. Is everybody, anybody else interested? Okay, so could I have a motion then from council to approve the deputy warden and myself to the new Accessibility Committee? Councillor Melanie Sampson?
I will make the motion that we appoint warden Amanda Malbrickett and deputy warden Mike Digg to the Accessibility Committee.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Brent Sampson?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. All right, so any further discussion? Okay, so all those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. All right, so the next item on the agenda is an Autism Month recognition. And this is related to the cupcakes that I've referenced several times during the meeting. April is World Autism Month. And here in Richmond County and across the Quad County region, I wanted to mention that a Blue Rock scavenger hunt was held over the weekend, this past weekend, and it was hosted by the Straight Area Chapter of the Autism Society. People were invited to search for the rocks in different places. St. Peters was one of them, to take a picture and then to email it to the chapter. The organizers right now have over 80 emails of pictures of people hunting for these beautiful little blue rocks in St. Peters, Port Hoxbury, Inverness, Geisborough, and Antigoneish. So it was really an amazing turnout. So I'd like to congratulate everybody who took part in that. Further to that, the Autism Nova Scotia Straight Area Chapter is hosting an annual walk. And this year's walk takes place June 12th. The walk this year is Walk Your Way, meaning there's no set time. And, you know, obviously because of the pandemic, they're avoiding the large gatherings of people. So you walk the route wherever you want to actually, and you take pictures and send them to them and show your team walking. And tonight, I also want to mention for our guests here and for people viewing at home is all of our council has done their best to light it up blue and wear some blue in support of World Autism Month as well. So, and again, a thank you to the Farmer's Pantry for the beautiful cupcakes. I think we need to get a close-up of those at some point before the livestream finishes because they're awesome. And all of those proceeds will be donated back to the Autism Society, so. Did any other councillors want to say a few words about autism, World Autism Month? Councillor Sean Sampson?
Yeah, thank you, and thanks, everybody, for the support tonight and wearing a blue. That's great. For me, just want to quote some quotes when it comes to autism. When you meet one autistic person, it means you have met one autistic person. The experience tells you nothing about the autism story. Autism is one word trying to describe millions of stories. We need to offer support, not judgment. So for me, and again, this show a support tonight, we need to accept, appreciate, be aware, and embrace autism. So thank you again for all your support, and I think that's great. And thank you to the Farmer's Pantry as well.
That's well said, councillor Sampson. Extremely well said. Does anybody have anything else they'd like to add regarding World Autism Month? Okay. So I'll move us on to the next item on our agenda, and it's the Close to Home Community Cleanup Day. But really, this item on the agenda is just about cleanup days that I've kind of been noticing happening in our various communities. The cadets, I know in particular from, and I guess I should back up a little bit and just say, the snow has melted, not that we had a ton of it this year, but it has melted, and it always leaves behind the litter, right? And every year, our communities step up to the plate to address that issue. The cadets from the 824 Silverdirt Royal Canadian Air Cadets, they've traditionally held a community cleanup in celebration of Earth Day each spring. This year, the theme for Earth Day is Restore Our Earth. And due to the COVID-19 protocols, they're not permitted to gather again as a large group for the traditional cleanup. But the cadets and the staff still very much realize the importance of a clean community. So they're asking businesses and residents in the East Richmond area to clean up closer to home along roadways and ditches. And the cadets will be making a cleanup kit that local community residents can use to conduct the close-to-home cleanup. But since I found out about the initiative of the cadets, I've taken note of cleanups in other communities as well. I know River Bourgeois has one coming up, I think later in April, the 24th, 25th, completely just community volunteer-led initiative. When I was driving through Pitta de Grau on Saturday, I could see there were some folks out cleaning up and putting the trash in bags for later pickup along the side of the road. And I just want to say kudos to all of the organizations and individuals who are taking it upon themselves to clean up our beautiful, our beautiful county. I would also, I would also encourage people to let the county know, like, let one of your municipal councillor know or staff here if you're planning such a community cleanup because they can often provide some support in terms of providing gloves and bags and then even potentially picking up the bags along the edge of the road. So, so nice to know that the county is here to support as well, so. Any questions or comments about that? I don't know if anyone's noticed any other initiatives. I'm sure there's all kinds going on that I missed, but it's nice to see. It's nice to see everybody pitching in, so. Any other questions or, no, okay. So I'll move us on. The next item on the agenda is strategic planning. And, you know, we've talked a number of times as a council about the need for us to kind of set what our priorities are going to be. We have a strategic plan that's, you know, that the county has right now. But I, you know, I think we've had some discussion about a potential refresh of that plan. But I just wanted to offer this as an item for discussion to councillors. You know, we potentially, we would be referring this to budget, obviously, because any kind of a strategic plan update would cost us some money. And I think it would be up to us to decide how much of an update that we need as well. So I don't know if there are any thoughts from councillors on this that we could provide some instruction to staff or just things that we need to keep in mind going forward? I just wanted to open the floor on that at this point, so. Councillor Sean Sampson?
Yeah, for me, looking back at the 2019, 2024 strategic plan online, what stuck out to me and what kind of I had issue with the most is that, you know, there was only 4% of the population that took part in this strategic plan survey. Not everybody has internet. Not everybody can open a PDF file, right? So as councillors, and this was part of my campaign, as councillors, we've got to better engage with our residents. We've got to better engage in our county. And we've got to, we've got to be out there and ask what's important to these people for your strategic plan, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so let's make sure that we better engage with our residents when it comes to a short-term and long-term capital funding projects and stuff like that, right? So again, better engagement. Thank you.
All right, thank you, councillor Sampson. Any other comments on that? Okay, oh, councillor Melanie Sampson?
I would agree with councillor Sean Sampson on that in terms of, you know, engaging the community and asking their opinions in terms of how they see we should move the county forward. Where I think I struggle, you know, is the, what's the breadth and depth of that, right? And so, of course, with both of those pieces comes price tags. And certainly, we're going to refer it to budget. I feel like maybe we've seen it before, but if we haven't, I'd love to see what that previous strategic plan cost us to prepare. So what that entailed in terms of like how many public discussion venues we had and, you know, where we touched people and what all of the, what the whole creation of the document cost. I feel like maybe we've heard the, like, a ballpark figure on that, but I would be interested to see what that cost. Because I'm not sure that we need to start from ground zero because we do have a document, and I think as a council, we've sort of talked a bit about it and that there's a lot of parts there that we think are probably baseline good, right? And so I don't feel like we need to throw the whole thing out. I feel like it does need a refresh. It does need consultation from the public. I feel like we're at an opportune time to get that feedback from the public. They, you know, after the campaign, everybody was very interested to share their thoughts, thankfully, and I feel like they will continue to do that. But I would like to get a bit of a range in terms of pricing and what that might look like. So I would certainly be interested to ask staff to do that for us.
Okay. Okay, are there any other comments or questions from councillors on that? Oh, sorry. Deputy Warden?
Yeah, I'd just like to, I guess, reflect on councillors, both councillor Sampson's, you know, initiative. I think one thing that we're missing is the out and beyond. We get the core people in amongst our, I guess, closer communities, but we're missing the, you know, like, our foreshoe, framboise, portletec. You know, even when we go up the line, we're missing, you know, out around Dundee. We're missing them people, I guess. And I think we need to engage them as well and bring them into our community and say, hey, what is it we can do to better improve? Or what is it you'd like to see? And I think, you know, we're missing the boat on them and that we really have to start to, I guess, inclusiveness.
Yeah, okay. Oh, we've got an echo going on. Pardon me?
It's me checking the streams, so we're hearing him over.
Okay, that's okay. Okay, thank you, deputy warden. Yeah, that's great. Okay. So I think at this point, maybe we could refer this to budgets specifically, though, to include what, you know, a little bit more detail on what that last plan caused us. I don't think they'll need a motion to that effect if... We have that information. Yeah, we're good. Okay, that's great. All right, so if there's no other comments, I'll move us right along. Okay, so the next piece on the agenda, the next item, is correspondence. And there is action required on two items. There is a request from the Richmond River Roots Community Garden Society regarding compost. So there, they have submitted a request speaking about the Richmond River Roots Market Garden Society whose mission and vision is related to food security. They are looking for access to the rich compost from the West Ayrshire Recycling Depot. And essentially, you know, the request is that they need as much as we could possibly provide because they're, you know, converting compost to healthy local food for all residents in Richmond County. They were asking, you know, if possible delivery to the site would be an added bonus. I thought they had specified an amount in here, but I don't, like, an amount of compost, but I don't see it in there. Did I miss that or? As much compost as we can provide. I thought I had seen an amount there, a number of tons, but I must have dreamt that. And, you know, and also the delivery. So I don't know if councillors have questions or comments of that, about that. Piece of information I do want to provide, just as background before we open it up, though, is that in the past, there was a practice, I think it's a fairly recent practice, and I don't think it was a longstanding one, where the council put aside 10 tons of access to free compost, basically two tons per district. And it would be, of course, any provision of compost would have to be when available because we can't necessarily control the weather. You need really, you need the dry weather in order to, in order to create the compost, so. Deputy Warden?
Yeah, I think the only thing that I would recommend is that we maybe discuss or have somebody discuss with our director of public works just to, I believe the compost is probably set there for everyone. So I would think that maybe if we direct it to the public works director, then we can go on his recommendation.
Okay, so you're suggesting that we kind of engage with the public works director? Yeah, okay. Councillor Brent Sampson?
Yeah, I was kind of thinking along, I was kind of thinking along the same lines just because the director of public works likely has an idea of how much on average is being produced, so.
It's 450 tons annually, approximately.
So depending how much goes out to the general public or is purchased, kind of thing. Because we don't want, you know, it end up all in one place and then...
The reality is, is that whatever we can produce gets gobbled up really quickly. There's never leftover compost. The, you know, I guess the question before us is, as a council, do we want to set some aside for community use that wouldn't necessarily be sold, so. Sorry, CAO Marshaun, you'd like to?
Yeah, I think, I think that that question had been asked a number of times in the past. And I think what staff recommended is that council consider creating a policy or a bylaw to deal with compost to organizations that require it, such as these folks here. And it's always been a, you know, we've entertained many requests regarding compost because, of course, it's great stuff and lots of people want it. So, but as well, lots of people in the public want it too, and they're willing to pay for it. So we do get a lot of people coming in to pay for it, and we can sell as much as we can produce. So, you know, it's very difficult to set aside compost unless we, I guess, have a policy or something to that effect, maybe a bylaw that would help determine how we would disperse that compost once it's ready for use.
Thank you. Councillor Melanie Sampson?
Thanks for that information, CAO, because that was exactly where I was sort of heading. I think, you know, to me, for me, in principle, I totally agree with the idea of providing compost to community groups like the Richmond River Roots Market Garden Society. You know, it's very, very important. Food security is an issue, for sure. So, you know, in principle, I completely agree what's fair and how to distribute it in terms of across the county is a different conversation. So it would be, I would be very interested to refer to bylaw and that the type of information we would be provided in that meeting, you know, as a bit of a brief in terms of, you know, what's the quantity we produce? What are we charging per ton for that? So what does that equal to in terms of, for lack of a better word, revenue lost or whatever? So I just would like to hear more information. And then for me as well, I'm also a bit naive in terms of what an organization like the Richmond River Roots Market Garden Society would need in terms of amount of, you know, you can say you'll take as much as we can give you, but I suspect they can't take 450 tons. So, you know, but I would just be interested to find out from some of these organizations as well, what would be a really helpful amount.
Yeah, I think that's a really good point. I mean, it's easy enough to say so many thousand, you know, per district or so many tons per district, but what if there's zero need in one district? but, um, what if there's zero need in one district and ten times the need in the next one? So it's, you know, it, it's an interesting question.
Yeah, I tend to be more in favor of like that we would have a number of groups that would sort of self-identify as being, you know, covered under this.
Right.
Bylaw or policy as we're, as we're sort of recommending, you know? Then they wouldn't need to be in that bylaw or policy, but, but the, the bylaw could just identify that they would identify themselves.
Yeah.
And then we'd say, okay, we've decided we're gonna use whatever, ten ton, and we're gonna divide it evenly amongst these groups that have identified by such a date or whatever. But, you know, definitely something to discuss at a bylaw and policy meeting.
Okay. Counselor Brent Sampson?
So I was just gonna say, could we make a motion to refer it to bylaw?
We, yeah, I don't think we'd need a motion to refer it to bylaw at this point. Um, we're not making a decision. So, um, we're just kind of, we'll, we'll put it there for further discussion. And I, I think, um, I think that's probably the best, uh, the best place for it at this point. And just to clarify too, it was a, it wasn't a bylaw, it was a policy. I don't know if I'm, if I, uh, indicated that correctly in the past where they had done that sort of allocation of so many tons per district. It, um, it was a, like it was a, yeah, it was just a resolution of council. So, um, okay. So, all right. So if everyone's okay with that, we'll refer that one to bylaw and policy. Okay? And the next item on the agenda then is, uh, from the organizers of the Maui Donage Multicultural Festival, East of the Causeway. And so last year, uh, several community groups came together to organize a week-long, uh, non-profit multicultural festival. Um, and of course, um, and I should say the name of the festival, Maui Donage, means coming together in Mi'kmaq. And it's a fitting title for a festival whose purpose is bridging cultural divides. Um, I was involved in the original, the original planning of last year's festival and, and, uh, hope to be continuing to be involved in the coming years if they'll, if they'll keep me. But, um, but essentially, uh, what happened last year was they had organized the festival, or we started to organize the festival, the pandemic hit. Um, and then, uh, eventually a decision was made to just do an online piece. And so I think the, you know, the main goal will be to continue that online, which it turned out to be a treasure trove of cultural information in this Facebook group. Um, but they'd also like to, um, add in an in-person, uh, experience. So, um, so their letter states that, uh, you know, while the face-to-face plans were sidelined by COVID, um, still had some great success. And this year, the festival will be held from June twenty-first, which is National Indigenous Peoples' Day, to June twenty-seventh, which is National Multicultural Day. We will host a variety of virtual and in-person activities throughout the week. And as part of the planning process, the committee is proposing the Richmond Arena as a potential venue for an in-person celebration on June twenty-seventh, sort of that final multicultural day. Um, as such, they're writing to request the use of the arena on June twenty-seventh from nine AM to nine PM. Uh, they're expecting up to two hundred attendees and would be consulting and following all local fire and public health protocols and guidelines for venues and facilities, facilities. And they have committed to providing a very detailed plan to ensure that all PPE, masks, sanitizer signage would be readily available and visible. Um, at the end of the event, they're suggesting they would restore the arena to its former condition and return any furniture or supplies, uh, that might have been moved before leaving. So at this point, I wanted to, you know, uh, they, they wanted, uh, the request to come to council because obviously this is a time of a pandemic and, um, right now it's looking good for gatherings and, um, and just looking for, I guess, the support or, or thoughts from councilors on, on this type of activity. So any, any thoughts or concerns or questions about that? There you go. Counselor Melanie Sampson?
Didn't hit the button.
I know.
Uh, I, I just, I, I think that making a decision like that involves, you know, certainly, you know, our CIO, Director of Public Works, like, to me, to make that decision is, is something that I would make based on the recommendation of, of staff in terms of what that looks like, whether or not, you know, our insurance policy permits us to do that. Cause my experience has not been that we've sort of rented out the entire facility like that previously. I'm not sure, um, espe- especially during a pandemic. Uh, and then I guess the second piece of that would be, uh, you know, I'm, based on the letter, it certainly sounds like they're looking to, to use it, uh, you know, pro bono, which may, may be fine as well. But again, I just, I worry about precedent setting, uh, and then perhaps the floodgates opening of others who may be interested in the same thing. Cause although groups do return them to, you know, its original condition, we still need to have staff to, you know, supervise, I guess, to make sure that everything is, is done suitably. So just a couple of concerns, which I think would require input from, from staff.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Dawn, I don't know if, um, if this is something that you could chime in on, but I'm just thinking, um, if we refer to staff, maybe there's some kind of a little bit of homework that could be done to kind of identify.
Exactly.
Yeah. Okay. And I, and I know in the past too, like, um, you know, if, if there was that kind of, like you say, uh, Counselor Sampson, that sort of precedent setting around the pro bono, um, there are, there, maybe there's an opportunity for an in-kind sponsorship or something. I, and I didn't see that here. I don't, and I honestly don't know what that's gonna look like going forward, but maybe that's something that could be explored as well. So could we get a motion then to, unless there's any further comments or discussion on that? Maybe a motion to refer, um, to ask staff to, uh, to, uh, look into the potential, uh, use of the arena for this festival? Is that?
Do we need a motion?
Do we need a motion for that?
Yeah.
I feel like, yeah.
Yeah.
Need one for that one. Okay. Deputy Warden?
Yeah, I would be, uh, happy to make that motion too.
Okay. All right. So Counselor Melanie Sampson?
I'll second the motion presented by Deputy Warden.
Okay. So thanks. So we, the motion is to refer, uh, use of the arena for the Maui Donage Multicultural Festival, uh, to, to staff for, uh, additional information. And are there any, is there any further discussion?
Motion.
Okay. So all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. Those opposed? Motion carried. Okay. Thank you so much. Okay. So the next item on the agenda is a review of checks issued from March twenty-twenty-one. Uh, those, uh, the list of checks was circulated in advance and, uh, just would invite councilors to, um, ask any questions they may have at this Okay. So hearing that, I'll move us on to, uh, the items added to the agenda. So the first one is Counselor John Sampson, uh, recognition of local owner-operator. So.
Uh, so yeah, I just wanna take the opportunity to, uh, recognize the owner-operator of the Clarestone Inn, Shauna Austin. Uh, Shauna has been nominated, uh, by RBC for the Canadian Woman Entrepreneur Award. Uh, it's presented by RBC and Women of Influence. So I guess one could say when it comes to influence, uh, I guess influence is to have impact. And, uh, what better example of impact than Shauna Austin and the impact that she's had on, uh, the Clarestone Inn when it comes to her commitment to this community and, uh, the commitment to renovation. Uh, that's a beautiful building and, uh, very important to, uh, this community and the tourism in this area. So just wanted to, uh, congratulate Shauna Austin on that nomination and, uh, thank her for her commitment, uh, to tourism and to, uh, the community here on Almeda.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Sampson. Counselor Melanie Sampson?
I just wanted to add one piece to that. Certainly I, I commend Shauna on that as well and on, uh, her nomination for that, for that award. But when, uh, when Terry was talking about the three hundred and sixty-five day tours, and I couldn't help but remembering that, you know, Shauna has mentioned a few times on social media how she's had groups staying with her at the Clarestone Inn and enjoying the trails of Almeda and certainly creating, you know, an economic spinoff for Almeda and the area. And I think that's the type of, of work that we need to continue to, uh, encourage our entrepreneurs, our local entrepreneurs, uh, to continue to perform, uh, to, you know, to increase our, um, visibility throughout the province and the country when we open back up.
For sure. Okay. Thank you. Thanks a lot, Counselor Sampson. That's a, a, a well-deserved recognition and best of luck to her in the competition. I think, uh, I think, uh, you know, she, her dedication speaks for itself, certainly. Um, so additional item added to the agenda was regarding a cell tower in West Ayrchat. So Counselor Sampson?
Yeah. So, uh, I've had numerous, uh, residents, uh, reach out to me about, uh, issues with, uh, cellphone, uh, phone calls being dropped. Uh, there's a very big concern for some residents. Uh, I've heard from people on the north side and in this area, uh, you know, people that are waiting for medical appointments, uh, medical phone calls. Uh, these calls are getting dropped to the point where, uh, their phones aren't even ringing. It's just going straight to voicemail. Um, they've, they've brought this to the attention of Bell and had many numerous conversations with Bell Alliance, uh, to the point where, uh, after numerous conversations, Bell has admitted that there is problems with, uh, the tower, uh, here in, uh, West Ayrchat. So I'd like to see us, uh, work with our local MLA and our MP and, uh, see if we can, uh, get to the bottom of that problem. Uh, God forbid, uh, an emergency nine-one-one call ever gets dropped, uh, because we have issues with, uh, cellphone towers or whatever. So, uh, hopefully we can get to the bottom of that situation.
Okay. Um, so I know Counselor Sampson, um, that the Cape Breton Partnership has done a little bit of work on that as well. So maybe we could, um, you know, ask staff to send a piece of correspondence to these, you know, to the MLA, like you mentioned, and, and the partnership, just to see if they might have some insight and, and, um, and potentially to set up a conversation if that needs to happen, like, like we did before. So does that make sense?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay. All right. Um, so could I have a motion then to refer this, uh, that action to staff? If that's, if that's agreeable to councilors? Deputy Warden?
Yeah, I'd make that motion too.
Okay. Okay. Uh, could I have a seconder? Counselor Sampson?
Yeah, I'll second that motion.
Okay. Thank you. So, uh, the motion is to refer, uh, some action to staff regarding the cell tower in West Ayrchat, reach outreach to, um, the MLA and the Cape Breton Partnership. Okay. So, um, any further discussion?
Question?
Nope. I've got discussion from Counselor Sampson.
Should we also be reaching out to Alliance?
Uh, potentially, yeah. Yeah.
I mean, we've met with them previously about, you know, rural internet. So.
I'm thinking we probably would get the best contact, the right contact through the Cape Breton Partnership.
Okay.
You know what I mean?
That's fine. Yep.
So I'm wondering if we start there and then?
Sure.
Yeah.
Yep, that's fine.
Okay. Counselor Sampson?
Yeah, and, and when reaching out to Bell Alliance, Counselor Sampson, uh, these residents have had, uh, ticket numbers given to them.
Okay, great.
And so, uh, some of them are referring the same ticket, uh, ticket numbers to Bell Alliance. So, yeah, maybe we can reach out to these residents and get that ticket number and, and refer that ticket number to, uh, Bell Alliance when we, uh, when we approach this.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. So we do have a motion on the floor then. Could I, uh, any further discussion?
Question?
Okay. So all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. Those opposed? Motion carried. Okay. Thank you. So that brings us to our fifteen-minute question period. So, um, we do have a couple of options for those of you in the gallery, if you'd like to ask a question. It does not need to be restricted to items on the agenda. You can go ahead and shoot. Um, or we have a phone-in option this time. So we're still, uh, experimenting a little bit with our live stream and how to engage better, uh, with the public through the live stream. So we figured we'd try the old-fashioned telephone. And if anybody would like to call in with a question, they can do so at nine oh two, two-two-six, nine-eight-eight-five. That's nine oh two, two-two-six, nine-eight-eight-five. And in the meantime, while we're waiting for the phones to ring, I'll offer it to folks in the gallery, for anybody who has a question. And we, we won't sit for fifteen minutes waiting, but.
No?
No, we won't. No, we won't. Hi, Lisa. I'll just ask you to press your, there you go. Here.
I'm Lisa Bodrov, an entrepreneur and resident of Ayrchat here in Almeda. I just had a couple of comments regarding the compost. I think that, you know, primarily food security is way up there in, uh, in reasons for considering a donation. But I think we can't forget our, uh, beautification groups and, and certainly our garden committees and clubs that keep plants growing in our communities and keep them fruitful as well. So if we're going to look at, at giving, then, you know, that's a possibility too. And there's also the question of maintenance of our brand-new, uh, flower beds along the, um, the new sidewalk here. So personally, I've done some, some picking of weeds there and others have as well. And, uh, there have been a discussion of compost being provided to garden committees for that purpose if there was, uh, you know, uh, an exchange done as well. So very important there. Um, the other thing regarding the, um, the trails, uh, you know, we, we have an infrastructure here on Almeda. We have an infrastructure in Richmond County. Uh, we certainly know where our trails are, and so that's, that's identifiable. Um, the condition of our trails though is another, is another thing altogether. So I think if we're going to have multi-purpose trails, we have to have trails that are capable of sustaining and bearing the weight all season of what's going to be used on them. So we may have started at one time with three-wheelers and one person on it, and now we have quads with four people. It's the same weight as a, as a small car. So we can't expect that our paths that were identified as trails at one time are going to be of, uh, you know, a condition to be able to, to take care of that. So certainly if we're looking at planning, then we should actually be planning for what is needed to upgrade our trails so that we can all be proud and that they can all be used for, uh, multiple things, whether it be four-wheelers, whether it be snowshoes, whether it be, uh, you know, uh, fat bike, uh, or, or CrossFit or, or cross, motocross, whatever.
[laughing]
You know, I'm a walker myself. So, you know, but it, you know, if we're going to have that for everyone, then it has to be in a condition that everyone can use it.
Absolutely.
Anyway, thank you.
Thank you so much. Pardon me? No. So it looks like we have a caller. I'm excited. I didn't get the question yet. You're right. You're right.
It's not the Marla.
Oh.
Oh, dear.
All right. So. So whoever that was, if they would like to call back, they can do that. Um, I feel a little bit like I'm running a game show. Two-two-six, nine-eight-eight-five. There we go. Hello?
Hello, I have a question for council.
Sure. Can I get you to say your name and, uh, and where you're from, please?
Uh, my name is, uh, resident of Richmond County.
Uh, oh, do you, do you have, could you tell us your name, Bill?
Well, do I have to say my name? Does it have to be publicized? I'd, I'd rather be anonymous. I'm a voting member of Richmond County.
Okay. Well, nor- normally for a normal question period, you know, we, we would be in person and we would be, we would be able to see who you are. But sure, sure, go ahead. You can ask your question. Absolutely.
Okay. My question is regarding the, uh, uh, the March twenty-second council meeting. The, uh, you guys had voted on a motion for emergency funding for, uh, Dr. Kinzington Clinic, something like that. It was just a bit confusing because when you were going through your talks and stuff like that, uh, Melanie Sampson, or Counselor Melanie Sampson indicated that she not feels an emergency. Uh, Counselor Sean Sampson indicated he agreed that it wasn't an emergency. But then when the vote came, Counselor, uh, Sean voted to pass the motion. So I don't really understand what happened there. Like what, what changed? I'd like to know what changed his mind, or did he accidentally put his hand up when he shouldn't?
Okay. Well, I, I guess that's a, a question for Counselor Sean Sampson.
Correct.
Yeah. Oh, sorry, Sean. I turned your mouth.
No. So, so for me, it's, it's, uh, one half or it doesn't matter the other, more or less. I mean, it's, it's, uh, pretty much just, uh, you know, maybe it wasn't an emergency and we didn't have to give the three thousand at that point. Uh, but we did, uh, upfront. Uh, so hopefully, uh, you know, we'll, uh, we'll save them that money, uh, in, in the short term. And hopefully in the long term, uh, we won't have to, uh, we won't have to give the three thousand on the backend, right? So, uh, yeah, I agree. It didn't look like an emergency at the time, and it probably still isn't, but, uh, that's three extra thousand that we don't have to give on the backend.
The term, yeah. And the term emergency is relative.
Yeah. So, so one, one thing comes sooner.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you for the question.
All right. Thanks for your question.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So is there any other questions?
You didn't have a cupcake?
Oh, no, I know. I can't offer cupcakes to people who are not with us this evening in person. All right. So if there's no other questions then, I think, um, we'll, uh, we'll have a motion to move to our in-camera session. Then if, uh, if I could get a motion from Uh, Counselor Brent or, uh, Melanie Sampson, sorry?
Our move that we proceed to our in-camera session.
Okay. Could I get a seconder? Deputy Warden?
Yep, I'll second that motion.
Okay. Thank you. So all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. Those opposed? Motion carried. All right. Thank you. So we'll, uh, we'll take a quick, uh, break before we move to in-camera and don't leave here without a cupcake. So we'll take a quick break before we move to in-camera, and don't leave here without a cupcake.